All right, I'll call this, uh, special city council meeting for October twenty second, twenty twenty to order and we'll begin with our roll call. Madam clerk.
Mayor Blackwell?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Matheny?
Here.
Councilmember Cooper?
Here.
Councilmember Askew?
Here.
Councilmember Trace?
Here.
Our first item on our agenda has, has our city manager's evaluation. Mr. Sturgeon, would you like to speak?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. First off, council, um, I'd like to thank you for the privilege of being able to serve as a city manager of the city of Saint Cloud. I've always believed that leadership is a privilege. I've always treated this position as a privileged position. And I appreciate all the teamwork that you guys have and support you've given me over the last three years. As you know, we are in the midst of a global pandemic. Uh, I can assure you that our staff has worked as a team along with the city council to continue to provide a high level of service to our community and to make sure all those essential services continue, even in the environment we're working in. I do see horizon a- ahead, uh, for the pandemic. I, I see a vaccine and treatments coming soon. Um, again, we don't know exactly the timeline, but I do see it coming soon. Um, through that time, we've been able to be financially responsible. We've helped out our community. Uh, and my team, um, has risen to the occasion on, uh, many times in the last seven months. So with that, again, thank you for the opportunity and I'm, um, interested in hearing the feedback from city council. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Who would like to go first? Mr. Cooper, your light's off. Would you like to speak?
I think so. Um, Mr. Sturgeon, I think you've done a good job so far and I think you're gonna keep going in the right direction and I got kudos to keep going. That's it.
Thank you, Mr. Cooper.
Who would like to be next? Mr. Askew, Councilman Askew?
Um, Bill knows how I feel about him. I think he's doing a fantastic job. He continues to learn, um, especially in the management style. Um, we're, we're such a growing city and I went through the evaluation. If, if there's something we can add in there about, uh, the particular, uh, particular areas, checking their area, let's give the example like the lakefront. If the signage is getting bad, if staff can let people know that the signage is getting bad, so we can get that stuff turned over, if the pipes need painting, if, you know, things like that. So if we can kind of create something like that, because we're growing so fast, things are getting old and no one's taking care of that stuff. So it might be a particular area out of a director's position, lower down that kind of goes, oh, sidewalks. And then we can, um, take care of this in the future. It's, it's a technique that Disney uses, um, so signs never look bad. Sidewalks never look bad. Um, they have a, just kind of going in there and just making sure. And it staff knows what's, what's wrong. I think that, you know, I'm not sure if they have an outlet to say, hey, look, can we get this fixed or changed or? So I don't know what the plan is. I could try to, uh, pull what Disney does for you, but I think that's, we're growing so fast. I think that's turned into a little bit of a challenge for us. But other than that, fantastic. Keep up the good work.
Thank you, Mr. Askew. We'll call that pride and ownership and we will get staff to come up with a program on that and, uh, make sure we're checking those things. Thank you for that input.
Who would like to go next? Councilmember Matheny?
All right, well, um, first I wanted to thank, um, Bill and Keith for being here, cause I know you guys have, um, had some tough personal things going on. So I appreciate that you were able to be here. Um, that shows your commitment, obviously, to the city. Um, so I, you know, I think I've kind of fallen in line with what everybody's gonna say here. I think Bill does a great job. Um, he always answers the call. He always gets back to me. He always, um, you know, handles all the issues that we have. You know, I think Bill and I have a good working relationship that if we had a problem with each other, we would just handle it and deal with it along the way. I certainly wouldn't wait for this opportunity to come in and like blast you for something. Like, you know, we, we talk about things all the time, um, and so I appreciate that and, you know, definitely learn from each other and have, um, you know, I think that's one of the beauties of having the varied backgrounds that we all have, like we all kind of attack things differently and, um, can kind of come up with, with, uh, creative solutions. So I think you're doing a great job. I think my recommendation to make you the city manager was brilliant, so. Um, but again, I appreciate you guys for being here. Um, you know, I know, I know this is a very difficult time, so, um, Bill, you're doing a great job. And, uh, hopefully I get to spend four more years with you.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor.
Councilmember Trace?
Uh, thank you. Um, overall, Bill, doing a, doing a great job, um, year over year, seeing the improvements as well. Um, I think over the past two years, you've had to hire almost all new directors. Um, and I think you've done a good job at that and then they've, they've fallen into their role well and I think they're being, uh, guided in, in a good fashion. Um, fiscal management has been, uh, pretty good over the past few years. I know this year we, we're having to take a, a pause on a lot of stuff, uh, due to coronavirus and, um, hopefully we can, we can, those projections are, um, conservative and we can, um, roll into next year with a, a good budget surplus. Um, the only thing I want to add to this, and it's something we typically hit in February, is our strategic planning session and I just want to make sure we, we, we take that time and hone in into three to five big goals for the, for the city for the year and work towards those. Um, you know, just, we have the overall strategy, but I think some of that just gets into the minutia, um, of just, you know, twenty, thirty, forty, uh, list of things. If we have just three or four big goals, um, and then we can push towards those and just show improvement, um, you know, all while protecting infrastructure and making improvements, uh, to the city. But overall, I think you're doing a good job, um, and keep up the good work.
Thank you, Mr. Trace.
Well, I want to, uh, join the comments here. I'd certainly commend, uh, your leadership, especially during this COVID crisis. I've seen you rise to the occasion and go the extra mile, doing things that, uh, certainly were out of the ordinary and I love the way that you've led your staff to, uh, get involved in making decisions so that it's just not you, uh, by yourself. And I think that's one of your strengths. Uh, I certainly appreciate your initiative and the strength in making, uh, more recommendations to us that you think ought to be done. Uh, and even when you know it may not be a popular recommendation, uh, I appreciate that. I think that's a great strength of leadership. I also appreciate, uh, what I have seen in your commitment to going the extra mile for, uh, you know, just spending extra time in leadership training yourself. Um, and then also requiring that of your staff. I just encourage you to continue to do that, you know, I just, you know, I think leaders are always learners and I think that's one of the things that certainly has made you, uh, uh, more effective and, uh, and I just encourage you to continue to do so, uh, with your staff. Uh, I'd like to recommend that you continue to build relationships with, uh, other city managers. Um, and the county manager, I, I think it's a good support, uh, just for you to hear what they're doing, for them to hear your story, uh, learn from their successes and, uh, I think it helps us to partner with, with things that, uh, will help you as well as our city. And so I just continue to encourage, I like the way you've done that and just continue to do that. Uh, I would like to ask that you, uh, explain to us in greater detail if, uh, several of us that are here are still here in a few weeks, uh, in greater detail, you know, what this open government platform is. I've been some reading and the impact that that's had on your staff and, uh, especially when it comes to your strategic planning and financial planning. You know, how can we come alongside that, explain that to the community as well as, uh, to, uh, our constituents? Um, I especially like the way that, uh, you have improved communication, you know, trying to communicate in multiple ways and different venues to the residents of our city, uh, our successes, as well as what we're trying to do to fix things and initiatives. And I think that has been a great strength and I, uh, commend you for that. Uh, in light of your leadership, I would certainly be in favor of approving the additional forty hours of leave that you've requested, as well as the additional recommendation that you be fully compensated for all of the accruals that you uh, have been awarded if you are, like you said, uh, dismissed or terminated without cause. Uh, and, uh, I would certainly be in favor of approving those two recommendations. So I'd like, do I need to make that a motion, Mr. Manzares?
Yes, yes, sir. This is a, this is a special meeting of the council, so you can take final action on this item. And, uh, if, if that's the direction moved, then we would, uh, we would revise the agreement based on the motion and then present it back to you for signature on behalf of the city and for Mr. Sturgeon too.
Okay.
And I think just to clarify, I think Mr. Sturgeon's request was that he be paid out all accrued leaves upon his separation. Uh, and, uh, that's pretty standard. Uh, as you know, accrued leave is, is earned leave and, uh, people don't get to use it because they are, they're working, so it's pretty standard to do that. So essentially the language would read that upon his separation from the city for any reason, he would, he would be paid out all his accrued and unused le- leave.
That's what was requested. I would certainly, uh, be in favor of approving that. And I make that a motion. Could I have a second?
Second.
Do we have any discussion before I ask for the question? Madam clerk, would you call the roll?
Deputy Mayor Matheny? I'm sorry, I didn't hear that.
You're, uh, you're muted.
Let's do a, do a thumbs up.
Thumbs up.
Or thumbs down.
Thumbs up.
Councilmember Cooper?
Aye.
Councilmember Askew?
Aye.
Councilmember Trace?
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell?
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
And reflecting that Deputy Mayor Matheny voted yes.
Yes.
Into the, into the audio record.
Well, thank you for clarifying that. Mr. Manzares?
Yes, sir.
Would you like to speak?
Yeah, I'll just give sort of a briefing and appreciate this opportunity to speak to the council, uh, on behalf of myself and our firm, uh, and this process of these annual evaluations for the city attorney's office. Uh, it is indeed a pleasure for us to continue to work with the city. Uh, we've been doing it for a long time and just sheer dedication and commitment and, uh, understanding that it's been a great relationship between our city, this city and our firm. Um, every year I like to re, to take the opportunity to remind the city council and anybody else that's listening that although you see me as the face sometimes of the city attorney's office and I deal with the council on a regular basis, uh, there are several individuals in my firm that spend a lot of time working with Saint Cloud, uh, behind the scene and working with staff. Uh, they don't go to the council meetings that often. Sometimes you might see them fill in for me, but for the most, but they do work. So we have several of our attorneys in our office, including two of my partners, Jack Mortensen and Lindsay Green, who work routinely on, uh, on matters for Saint Cloud. Um, and then we have several associates in our office that handle the various other things that we, that, uh, are, that have to be done on a daily basis. And so, you know, we're, we're very proud of our team. Uh, we're very proud of the opportunity we have to work for Saint Cloud. And we're most particularly proud of the fact that we think we've created a, a full-fledged city attorney office with a, with a variety of different attorneys with different experiences and backgrounds and capacity to handle any issue that the city has had. So, uh, we're very pleased with that. Over the, over the course of this past year, we've provided over one thousand three hundred attorney hours, uh, on behalf of the city, uh, and, uh, just to get, just to, to help get the job done and we feel like we've done a very good job doing it. I can tell you, as everybody knows, it's been a very interesting year for everybody on a daily basis. Uh, and what we've been doing in our activities of daily living and how they've changed, but it's been an incredibly interesting year from a legal perspective. Uh, there have been issues that have come up, uh, related to the, the, to not just COVID, uh, but the, uh, the community and things related to, uh, what's been happening all across the country and in our community, uh, and, and locally. So we've, we've been challenged this year. We've learned a lot this year, uh, and, uh, we want to continue to take what we've learned and how we've had to deal with some of these very unique issues, uh, and, and, and be able to provide better service, more informed service, uh, to deal with unique issues. Uh, I've been doing this a long time and I, and I think I've seen more unique issues this year than in, in, in all of the, the, the decades I've been doing this before this year. It's stuff that we've never had to even think about and deal with. And I think Mr. Sturgeon would agree with me. They've seen it on the city manager business. And then finally, I just pointed out, and Mr. Trace mentioned this when, uh, he was talking about Mr. Sturgeon, is it's been a good, very good year, even despite all those legal issues and the unique issues and the extra work that's been going on. It's been a, been a very good year for our office and our operation with the city because the city has got to the point where it has a very, has a great upper management staff in place right now. And, uh, the deputy city manager and now for the directors are just at the highest level that we've ever seen in here at the city. Uh, and I think that, that, that provides for, uh, a really positive outlook for the future of the city. And truthfully, it makes our job, uh, a lot easier. So we appreciate that very much. And other than that, I'm willing to listen. I'm anxious to hear any comments, any of the city council members might have, but thank you for the opportunity to speak with me.
All right, thank you. Mr. Cooper, is your light off for a reason? Would you like to speak? Okay. Would anyone like to speak? Councilmember Matheny? Can you unmute?
Hear me?
There you go. We can hear you.
Oh, what the heck? I don't know what's going on. I'm, I'm at my boyfriend's house because he had surgery and I think he's got gremlins or something. Um, Dan, I think you do a fantastic job. I think you bring, um, something to the table that it cannot be replaced. Your institutional knowledge, um, you know, I, I don't always agree with, with your rulings on things, but hey, that's how it goes, right? Um, but I think you do a fantastic job and thank you so much, um, for your dedication to the city. I, um, you know, once again, I just don't think, um, we could replace your institutional knowledge and just, um, everything that you do for the city. I think you do a great job.
Thank you very much.
And see, aren't you glad it unmuted?
Someone else? Councilmember Askew?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I only have great things to say about Dan. Um, uh, he, he's always been there and he's been through some, uh, some wild times in the past six years, so, um, but, and I, and I agree with him. Um, you put great staff in place, great directors for the city. Not only do our citizens benefit from it, it probably makes Dan life a whole lot easier, including the city manager. So I seen the change. Um, I think it's great and I think that has to do with Bill, Dan, uh, and heading down that direction. So kudos and, uh, we would truly miss you if you left.
Thank you.
Councilmember Trace?
Thank you. Um, overall, great, great guidance, uh, as always. Um, I think it's, it's interesting. It doesn't feel like this is a out-of-house, uh, law firm. It, you know, it feels like you are, you know, with the city all the time. Um, you know, they're, uh, answering all the emails, all the calls, um, you know, giving guidance and, and questioning on things. So, um, overall, great job and, uh, keep up the good work.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak? Mr. Cooper, Councilman Cooper?
Dan, I think you've done a good job and, uh, look forward to keep working with you and, uh, I don't see any problems and you've helped me a lot with questions that I've asked and, and, uh, you get good answers. And I appreciate that and, uh, thumbs up.
Thank you, Mr. Cooper.
And I would just like to echo the, all of that continued sentiment. Uh, I, I just have grown to respect you more and more, your professionalism, um, your knowledge of the law, your knowledge of our city and our history, are just, uh, huge. Uh, I think, you know, you've always made decisions that, uh, are always in the best interest of our city and there certainly are whatever the law says. Uh, and all your judgments, I believe, have been incredibly, uh, solid and sound. Uh, and I also appreciate your demeanor, uh, in the few times where we've had, uh, some tense situations and things were being said and done. I mean, you've just always kept your cool, uh, and your professionalism has just, have just been, uh, outstanding. And I commend you for that. Uh, my only recommendation is that, uh, I just think we need to make sure, uh, when there's transition, you know, this new election coming up, if new people come on, uh, I think right away they need to be orientated, especially regarding legal issues that they're going to be confronting and how they ought to make decisions, especially what does it mean to make quasi judicial decisions and, and, and just explain the JPA issues. Those are big issues that I'm not sure you people always have their head around. And so, but I love the way, uh, uh, you explained those and, uh, I, I'm just looking forward to hopefully continuing to work with you.
Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate it.
To me, thank you for all you do.
Thank you.
Do we have anything else we'd like to add? Yes, Mr. Sturgeon?
Yes, sir. I could say a few comments, Mayor.
You sure will.
So I want to thank Dan. Um, he shaped me as a city manager. I can't do this job without him. He is always there for me and he knows when I walk down the hall and I look in there and I get that funny look on my face. He always knows how to calm me down, explain things to me. He's very helpful, knowledgeable, not only of the law, but of government operations and he's a godsend for this city and, and I appreciate Dan Manzares and his firm. Um, his, his team is so professional and anytime we call, they're on the phone trying to help us do an issue. So thank you, Dan, for your leadership and your mentorship. I appreciate it.
I appreciate that very much, Bill. Thank you.
Well, you've gotten, uh, quite a few thumbs up here. Thank you, man. It's a joy to have you and, uh, I'm looking forward to continuing the relationship.
Yeah, sincerely appreciate all the great comments. We work very hard and we're glad to see that they're appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you very much. At this time, we have our city lobbyist report and evaluation. I see, Chris, are you here?
Yes, good evening, council.
It's good to see you. We'll, uh, give you the floor now. Would you like to share?
Sure, thank you. Uh, well, good evening, everyone. Uh, good to see you. Uh, I, I, I will join in the chorus, although I don't have a vote, obviously. You have a great city manager and a, and a great attorney. I've been working with Dan, uh, for many years now and we've worked with a lot of different city attorneys, both inside and out, and you've got one of the best there. And Bill is tremendous. He gets us whatever we need when we're on the ground doing stuff for y'all in Tallahassee, whatever. Uh, he and the staff jump right away. If we say we need an answer on this or that, they get it. Um, so it's always great to be working with a team like that. And of course, you, the council, uh, that you guys, whenever we've asked to engage, you, many of you have made the trip to Tallahassee to assist in that lobbying effort, which we always say presence is power and it makes a difference. And so we appreciate that. Twenty twenty, uh, was a normal session. The rest of twenty twenty, as you know, has been anything but normal and we'll try to get into that. But, uh, the session which concluded in the first week of March, uh, really was uneventful in many ways. Uh, the, the legislature passed a ninety-three point two billion dollar budget. Within that budget, uh, we successfully procured three projects for the city of Saint Cloud. Uh, and then, uh, in the midst of those closing weeks of session, as you all know, uh, COVID nineteen, uh, and the pandemic started to set in. Uh, we only felt the true effects of it is from a policymaking and a just a general how it was affecting session in that last week. Otherwise, it was a, a normal session where people would occasionally say, hey, did you hear about that coronavirus coming out of China? It's starting to move to Europe. What do you think? I mean, just like y'all, no one really took it too serious because they didn't think they had to. Um, and then, of course, it all came down in the last week of session. I'll get into some of that. But, but beyond the city, you guys had a great session. Uh, when the governor went to his vetoes, unfortunately, some of our projects were taken away, but one did survive. And I would say, um, that puts us in a very rare, uh, class to have any project survive. Um, so when you thank your legislators, both in the House and Senate, um, thank them, uh, prof- profusely. Um, we'd like to take credit as lobbyists and believe me, like the first rule of lobbying is take credit for all the good and blame someone else for the bad, right? But the, but seriously, uh, LaRosa and Torres, they did great jobs for us and, um, it wasn't an accident that we had one of our projects survive because the vetoes, as you know, was a one point one billion dollar veto. Nearly all of the university projects went away. Nearly all of the special projects went away. So the fact that we made it out of that, we were thrilled, um, on your behalf, um, and, and we're bullish for things to come in the future years. Uh, but the session, like I said, it was a relatively normal session. Um, there were some policy measures that you all know that will have some effects down the line. Uh, the House was pushing hard for, um, scope of practice for nurses, uh, or, or, um, physician assistant, registered nurses. And then as well for pharmacists, you probably kept up with that. That was, pharmacists can now run a strep test, could run a flu test and then prescribe you the drugs that you may need, um, the antibiotics. Probably timely now that we know that pharmacists might be doing some other tests in twenty twenty-one and beyond to help folks stay safe. Uh, and then for, for, uh, physician assistants, same thing. They can now, uh, certain groups under certain scopes can now practice without a doctor. And all this was under the guise of better access to healthcare, right? So for some folks, the doc and the boc is, is their, their doctor. They don't have a primary care doctor that they see regularly or can't afford to see a primary care doctor. And so going to a pharmacist for strep or flu test or going to a physician assistance practice is some, is their best option. And so that was the focus on that. That was on the House side. On the Senate side, much of the focus, um, was on some, the government's environment, governor's environmental proper, uh, priorities, which, which will ultimately benefit Osceola County and the city of Saint Cloud as there's more water, more funding put into water quality and quantity, but as well on teachers' pay. Um, the, the governor's priority in the Senate adopted it and helped lead with it was to, uh, rate, start, increase the starting wage for, uh, new teachers in Florida in the top five nationally, which they were able to do. Um, now, the trick of that, as you all know, if you have any school board experiences, there, all those contracts are negotiated locally with the school board and, and the, uh, the union. But there was enough money put in the pot and enough, um, incentives, I'll say, to get most school boards where, and I would say most, if not all, sixty-seven school, school boards in the counties are going to have now that starting pay at the higher level. I would expect this coming session, if there wasn't a pandemic and a recession, that we would have, um, more money put on the table for, uh, veteran teachers. I still think that's going to be a priority, but it's not something that's going to be easily done now with the financial constraints. But, eh, other than that, then there was the ninety-three point two billion dollar budget. The highlights of that, like I said, were water funding, um, which was the governor got, uh, year two of his four-year ask of about two billion towards water quality. And so that's in, that, that's in initiatives for, uh, septic sewer or just septic upgrades. That's into springs cleaning. That's, uh, also into, uh, the Everglades and areas down there, um, and, and Lake Okeechobee. Uh, what's noteworthy of that is in his first year, he got that approximate, you know, six hundred million. And DEP couldn't spend all of that money. They had more money than they knew what to do with because there wasn't many shovel-ready projects for this. Uh, most, including us, most local governments got, kind of got keen to that and figured out that a water project's going to have a better chance than other projects. And so went down that path. And so there's now more projects in the line for DEP to go fund. But if the governor gets that for the next two years, it's going to be a great windfall for our area in central Florida and especially in Osceola County, as we're the, uh, top of the Everglades as we feed down in, um, as well as we've got our own waterways that we deal with in our, just a small little lake in our backyard that you guys deal with. Um, so that was priority. Teacher pay was another priority that I already covered there. And then as well, um, uh, Visit Florida, which was key to, uh, this area of the state, uh, probably more so than other areas. As you all know, uh, Visit Florida was set to expire on June thirtieth, uh, of this year, uh, i- if not saved by the legislature. Um, and so they saved it for three years, which will put it beyond this governor's current term, perhaps into a second term, and put it beyond the next speaker and the next president's, uh, term of office. So essentially it will be someone else's, uh, opportunity, I'll call it, not problem. But they pushed it three years down the road to give it some guideline. And, I mean, you know, you'd rather be lucky than, than prophetic or wise, but thank goodness. Because could we imagine Visit Florida not existing in this current pandemic recession where we desperately need our tourism economy to come back in Osceola, Orange, Seminole Counties areas? So, uh, they're gonna, they got fifty-three million in funding. I would say if anything gets an increase in the twenty twenty-one session, it's going to be Visit Florida. They're going to get an increase in funding to help really recharge our, our, uh, tourism economy. But those were the high-level issues of session. Obviously, I could talk for a full hour on all the various issues that went into play. E-Verify was another one that could have some effects down in the southern part of the county, uh, on some of the more agricultural-focused land areas and, and parts of Saint Cloud as well, where E-Verify is now going to be required of all employers. Um, uh, some more immediate than others if you have, uh, if you have a vendor relationship with a local government, um, or a state government. But then generally, that was it. And so, like I said, we were successful. We had a good run. I want to thank our legislators for that. And I would say a preview of next session, eh, I would, I'm going to go ahead and predict Victor is as likely to win his reelection, although y- y- you can never guarantee anything, but I would suggest that he's probably going to win. And it sure looks like Commissioner Hawkins on the Osceola County Commission is likely to win that seat and replace LaRosa. If that is the case, uh, and of course, the elections are fifteen days away, as you all know, um, some of you have your own races, um, that we'd be in good posture. That we'd be in good posture. Hawkins would be a freshman, uh, but a freshman in the Republican Party, which we expect will maintain control in, in the House. And, and he's worked hard, uh, to, to get himself in the right position with the House leadership that's incoming and some of the leaders around our region that, that, that he looks to his mentors. So we expect that he'll be able to effectively push any appropriation projects we want to look at or just policy issues we want to look at. And then as well, Senator Torres will be in his final term if he's reelected. And we expect the Senate w- will be a close margin, meaning Republicans versus Democrats, which will make all the senators that much more impactful, even in the minority party, which will able to be, hopefully be able to work with him on that to leverage better for some of our appropriations and for, um, our, uh, our policy issues that we're looking at. But by and large, I've said it a couple of times, I'll say it again, and it's largely due to y'all, due to our great representation up there and, and the staff on your, your city team. It was a great session. Um, and I would encourage y'all, as you look to next year, um, that we look at, uh, policy as well as appropriation issues. And what I mean by that is it's going to be a tight budget. Um, we, uh, and I should probably cover that. Amy Baker, our chief economist for the state of Florida, annually gives a report in July of what she expects the revenue projections to be for the next year. The current fiscal year, kind of an update of here is where we stand, but really the next year. On the current fiscal year, she said that we're going to be three point six billion dollars down, uh, for the whole year, not to, not so far. We were obviously not there yet. Um, but from, you know, July one to June thirty, she expects three point six billion dollars down. Now, the very next month, August, uh, the state beat her projections for that month by a hundred million. So what does she know? I don't know. She's smarter than I am when it comes to this stuff. But what, what, what this is telling us is no one really knows what the budget's going to look like for next year, uh, as, as projections are doing this and that. Here's what we know in the K-shaped recovery is it's called tourism's doing this, it's flat, others are, are going up. And so we'll just have to see how it all shakes out. Uh, but I tell you all that is because she projected a two billion dollar shortfall for the twenty-one, twenty-two, uh, fiscal year. And we, and you as a city and the county that you're in, y'all are looking at property tax losses, especially in the commercial, um, sector. Hopefully not residential. That seems to be holding on well and, and one would expect it'll hold on until January one, but it's going to be some losses there. So the budget is going to be iffy in twenty twenty-one. So appropriation projects are going to be, while I'm encouraging, uh, Bill and staff to bring us these projects and for you all to approve them because you, you can't get anything unless you ask for it. I think they're going to be tight in the twenty twenty-one session. So when I say, look at policy focused issues are, are there things that you as council members, the mayor or, uh, Bill and his staff feel are inhibiting your ability to, to, to take care of your citizens, whether it's from an economic development perspective or, or from just a general development of your properties that you own or that others are coming to you for permits and approvals on? You name it, eh, better stuff for your roads or for your infrastructure. Anything we can think of from a policy perspective that if the governor and the legislature agree and approve and sign and take away a restriction on how we do things would help us do business better, I think we should suggest it. This is, if ever a year, um, we do it, it's that, I, I heard, I've heard one, I'll make a suggestion of one. I don't know how much you spend on your, your advertisements in the newspaper when you have to publicly advertise for something, but there was momentum last year to get rid of that requirement and push it all online. I think there's going to be even more momentum this session, given what's going on with the pandemic and the Senate President Wilton Simpson is strongly in favor of, of, of reducing that. And it was, that's where it died last year is in the Senate. That's something to consider that would, it's, it's probably only thousands of dollars, but I mean, if you can save a few thousand dollars here and there each month, that adds up and, and services you can provide or s- better staff you can hire. So I, I encourage you to think of it that way of, are there some policy things that would enable the city to better, uh, compete in the marketplace, both within the state of Florida and, and nationally and internationally, as you try to attract businesses and grow your community? Um, if there's ways that the state can help you, because if there's a regulation that we think is unnecessary, like an environmental, uh, checkoff that has to be done for a development that you are asking the question, does this really help the environment? And if it, if it doesn't, why is it necessary? Maybe this is the time to ask the state to remove that requirement or provide exceptions that will help you better promote development within your community. So I say all that, eh, there's a lot we can look at, at a later date or even tonight to look at twenty twenty-one for the legislative session, but we're going to be in good posture. And as always, I know I speak for Dean and the rest of the team, um, it's an honor to work with you all. Uh, and I'm certainly welcome any comments or discussion points or can answer any questions.
Does anyone have any questions you'd like to ask? Could you speak to the Sadowski funds and where do you think, uh, how that's going to end up?
No, thank you for reminding me. Uh, absolutely. So, uh, if you would have asked me last session, it, w- if they would approve the Sadowski, or, or if they would sweep or not sweep the Sadowski trust funds, I would have said eighty percent chance it gets swept again, right? Uh, the House was, Speaker Oliva has, was, has been a good speaker and he's done a lot in the healthcare area and all. But one area where he and I disagree and a lot of the cities disagrees, he was not a big fan of the Sadowski trust funds. He didn't think it was really helping, uh, affordable housing in the state. He probably thought, he, I, I think in many ways he thought it was hurting, right? That it was, it was setting up a system that didn't really do much help. Um, so when the Senate pushed hard for full funding and the House went along with it, color me surprised. And I think that was part of some of the negotiations over that healthcare expansion, scope of practice stuff. I think that, uh, Senate leveraged some of those things that the House wanted for that. Um, but it was a pleasant surprise and it was fully funded. Unfortunately, as you know, Mayor, the, the governor had to veto some of it to make room for, uh, I, I call it the pandemic cushion in our budget to make sure we could survive this fiscal year. So he, he vetoed, I'm going to, boy, I haven't looked at this list in a while. I believe he vetoed the, uh, ship funds and preserve the sale funds. And so the sale goes to the actual development. So those are, those are incentives that will come down for the developers to use. The ship goes more towards assistance. Um, both are absolutely one hundred percent necessary and needed. So at least some of it survived. But I will tell you this, next session, they already know they're going to have a shortfall anywhere from one to two billion. I think they're going to fight hard, both Chris Brown's, the future speaker, and, and Wilton Simpson, the future Senate president. I expect they're both going to fight hard to fully fund it again and try to protect it from vetoes. Um, because I think they recognize we've just got issues in our state and every one of our communities has affordable housing concerns. And so I think they're going to do what they can to, to fund that.
That'll be interesting. Anyone else have any questions or comments you'd like to make? Councilmember Trace?
Thank you. Um, as always, Chris, your team, uh, does a great job. Um, sorry, I'm grabbing this. Um, does a great job in Tallahassee and, you know, so you win some, you lose some. And this year, you know, we, we did rather well than, um, COVID came in and snuck away some of those funds. Um, uh, one of the things I want to bring up is just for us to, hopefully in the next, you know, um, block of workshops we have, um, do some brainstorming for some lobbying efforts. Uh, two of the big, just kind of words I want to say for this is water and roads over the next ten years. Those are going to be our two biggest, um, items. It's all under infrastructure, but it's trying to get that water allocation higher. And, you know, we're in the, the, not, not unique situation, but a situation where a lot of our main roads are county or state roads. And, um, you know, just trying to get the, the dollars allocated towards those roads, uh, to help us out. Um, and then also, um, you know, this is, this is still under Gray Robinson, but not really a state thing. Um, I want us to spend more time focusing on figuring out what federal lobbying issues, um, we, we have and we can lobby for. We did hire, uh, federal lobbyists this year, um, as the first year, and I just want us to get some momentum behind that. I know it takes a couple of years for, for things to come to fruition, but we either need to pick one goal and stick with it for something or, or figure out what, what we want to push for.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak? Councilmember Askew?
Um, Chris, I appreciate you and your team. Um, every time we go up to Tallahassee, I get schooled on, you know, um, what we need to do, what we need to say. Um, and I appreciate that, that's, um, in everything that you guys do for us. Um, you seem to always go above and beyond, especially when we have a, a challenge. So, uh, keep up the good work. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Mr. Sturgeon, do you have something?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I, I just want to thank Chris for his leadership and, you know, I, I felt that we were positioned very well this year for several appropriations, the seaplane base and, and mutter road. Um, but the COVID strike, we still were able to obtain the, uh, grant for the dredging of the lakefront, um, which, which has went really well. Um, again, you know, session starts a little later next year, so we have some time to, to look at those big goals. I agree with Mr. Trace. We need to pursue, um, those water allocations and we need to figure out how we're going to fix some of these road issues we're having in our city. Uh, thank you, Chris, and, and I appreciate, we have a personal relationship and a professional relationship. I appreciate that.
Yeah. Oh, sorry, Mayor. Is that okay to respond?
Yeah, you go right ahead, Chris.
Thank you. Yeah, no, and I, the feeling's mutual. You, you, you guys are great to work with. Uh, Councilman Trace, I wanted to at least address the roads and water. One thing I would say is given the state roads, as you said, that cut through there, perhaps during one of these workshops and such, we should bring some folks in from DOT. Um, or we can have some sidebars, Bill and I and you and others of interest that, that want to take this up. Uh, DOT is, is pretty good if you can help guide them. Obviously, there's work plan issues and we should make sure any and all roads that we can be getting in the work plan are getting in and we get them eh, pushed up as far as we can up the, through the NPO of the list. Um, but, but as well, I mean, every year, this is a year where it didn't happen that way because of the gas tax and other things. But every year they've, they've got funds at the end of the year that they're looking to reallocate because they didn't get spent here and there or even every quarter, depending on the project. And so if you, if you, if you stay on their radar enough and kind of make enough noise, you can usually find some allocations that will assist some of these projects that have to go towards certain projects, including the projects that would qualify in the city. Um, and we can get those done. And then of course, we can do it from the legislative route, but I, I would say almost a dual track there. Let's c- continue to work with DOT. And then as well, let's also identify the water projects that we think are, eh, come up with our list. It can be fifty projects. It could be ten and rank them and, and, and then categorize them by, you know, rest or, or, or cleaning, um, restoring, uh, quantity issues, uh, what have you, um, eh, eh, or septic issues as well. And then we go to DEP. We go, go with the secretary and their team and the people they designate and say, here, let me tell you what we're working on. Yeah, we're going to go ask for some money in the legislative session, but, but let's go look at these and let's see what they can do with us. Because they've got, they were funded a lot this session and, and they're still looking for opportunities to spend those funds. So there's no reason even right now to go ask what they can do and partner with us on to go get some, some projects done. Because they, they, they're like anyone else. They want to have their, their, their hits, their doubles, their triples and their home runs. And they won't know what those opportunities are unless we're putting them on their radar. So, and I know eh, Bill and his staff are definitely putting those on their radar and they're applying for grants when they are. We get, we get a lot of calls from the city staff on, on grants and how to approach them or who we can call to weigh in and we're always happy to do that. But it, to your point, Councilman Trace, it'd be good to strategize on that. Um, Mayor, I also wanted to bring up, and, and certainly I don't know when it's appropriate or not, but, uh, we enjoy a great relationship and not to be insensitive of the current times, but if, if there are opportunities to explore modest increases or raises on, on our, on our, um, uh, allocation from the city, we would love to explore that, but we don't mean to press it too hard. I think we've been at the same rate for a while now and would love to explore that. But again, that was a polite nudge push. I'm, I'm not trying to, uh, rock the boat there, but uh, I think I, I, I learned one thing in law school negotiating. If you, if you're doing well, maybe ask for more, uh, you never know. Um, but the, uh, with that, eh, other than that ask, I would say it really is a pleasure to work with you all. It's a, it's a great, uh, hand in glove type partnership with the city and our firm and we, we appreciate the confidence you place in us.
Thank you. Does anyone else want to speak?
Well, you can certainly, uh, take that ask to the city manager and I'm sure he'll be willing to sit down and listen to, uh, whatever proposals you have. I would just like to also, uh, commend you for your work. Uh, you know, when you walk the halls, uh, there in Tallahassee and to the offices of the different legislators, it's obvious that, uh, you guys are highly respected and, uh, have influence that, uh, other people don't seem to have. And so you're, it's a real joy to work with you. And I know we've, we've hit a couple of bad years here with the, the COVID, uh, the Parkland shooting. But I, I think there's just going to be other issues that we haven't even thought about yet related to the recovery from the COVID that we're certainly going to need your help with. And so we look, uh, we look forward, or at least I look forward certainly to a continued relationship with you and Gray Robinson.
We appreciate that.
And give Dean my regards. Any other comments? Mr. Matheny? You don't have anything to say? I'm surprised. All right. Anything else you need from us, Mr. Sturgeon? Well, I don't have any. Go ahead.
I said, no, Mayor. No, not.
Thank you. Mr. Mazzaras, you have anything else?
No, sir. Thank you very much.
And I don't have any other items on our agenda. Thank you so much. And with that, we'll be adjourned and we will start at six thirty. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Thank you, Chris.